All right, with that, let's start the April 2nd, 2020 Forest Lake School Board Meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
For which it stands.
All right, member clerk, will you please take your roll phone?
Member Corcoran. Member Corcoran? No.
Here.
Oh, here. Okay. Unmute yourselves real quick. Hey, Dan. Okay. Member Ketto?
Here.
Member Olson?
Here.
Member Raphael?
Present.
Present. Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Tyson is present. Member Peterson?
Present.
Member Peterson is present and member Luther is present.
All right. With that, start with approving the meeting agenda. Is there any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing nothing. We have no public comments. So, reports. Dr. Massey.
Thank you very much. Let me give just a quick reminder to folks. If you unmute your mic until you are speaking, that'll help with the audio and the sound. All right, board, welcome to our somewhat new reality as a school district. If we have any doubt about the power of technology, we held our first round of interviews for the Wyoming Elementary Principal position yesterday. We held 16 different Google Meet, Google Hangout meetings over the course of the day with 16 different candidates, and the technology worked flawlessly for us. So, we're excited about that. We move candidates on to our next round, which will be next Wednesday, April 8th. So, we're excited about the site of candidates that we're looking at for that position. We're also holding Google Hangout meetings throughout the district. Teachers are holding those with each other, with grade levels. We held our Ad Council meeting last Tuesday with 28 of us, all on the same Google Hangout meeting. We held about a three-hour meeting going over different topics. And much like tonight and this meeting, the meeting went extremely well. So, it's been a really successful tool for us. I'm going to spend most of my update time giving you once again an update on our distance learning plan and our response to COVID-19 before I turn over to our directors to get their specific area and updates from their area. A couple of comments by way of bigger picture or summary pieces. We started distance learning this week. In fact, it was just yesterday, April 1st, that we started fully implementing our distance learning plan. We spent the previous two weeks in preparation for distance learning. And when I shared a couple of weeks ago, the magnitude of the task, I want to just echo again that in two and a half weeks, we completely transitioned our classroom-based system to a digital platform, a distance learning and digital platform. That has been one amazing feat completed and undertaken and completed by our teaching staff. I just can't understate, or overstate, I should say, the level of work, the innovation, the resilience, the determination, the passion our teaching staff across the system has put into preparing for their lessons with kids that started yesterday. We handed out through curbside learning materials to students. They jumped on the Canvas, our learning management system, and they're off and running with learning. So, we're getting good response from teachers, from parents, and teachers are making tweaks and adjustments as we move forward. Keep in mind that we're in a distance learning setting until the end of April. In fact, the governor stated during this phase that it would be May 5th when he would, when he set a date for returning to the classroom. The two days, April 1st, Friday, April 1st, and, excuse me, May 1st and May 4th, Monday, would be planning days for kids, students returning on May 5th. However, if you follow the governor's press conference today, he hinted at the notion that perhaps students won't be returning at all to the classrooms this year. I say that with a little bit of emotion in my voice because I think I I speak for teachers across our system who would be awfully, awfully sad not to see their kids return to the classroom. So, we're holding out hope that by mid-May, if not early May, or sometime yet this year, that we do bring kids back to our schools and finish out the school year, but we're going to wait and see as we all understand. So, we are fully operational with our childcare program. Corey McKinnon will give us an update on that in just a little bit. We're providing meals to our students. In fact, we're over between 500 and 600 meals a day that we're providing for our students. Larry Martini will give us some updates. And like every business across the state, we are encouraging our staff, when possible, to be working remotely. The district office today had three or four folks here, and the rest are working from home. And fortunately, the technology is allowing us to continue with our work. So, with that, I'm going to turn over the platform to Diane Giorgi, our Director of Teaching and Learning, to give us an update on distance learning. Diane?
Yeah, I would echo what Dr. Massey shared about these first two days. It has been amazing how smoothly it's gone overall, just the feedback we've gotten from both parents and teachers that the work that they put in play, that the teachers put in place ahead of time really paid off in helping parents to feel that they understood what was going on, where to pick up materials, who to ask if they had questions, feedback from some of our elementaries where they were actually getting thank yous from parents about the clear way that the information was laid out for the elementary students, to be able to help support them when they're at home and needing to figure out what their next steps are. There was actually a post from one of our teachers at the high school saying that after the first day of distance learning, over 90% of his students had actually completed all their assignments in that first day, so a little success there as well. It really has been an amazing start considering what we were thinking about three weeks ago to what we suddenly had to turn to be able to put into place in, in order to be able to get to this point now. So, we know we still have some things to be able to make some adjustments for. We have, we already had scheduled PD Day on April 13th, and we're going to keep that as a non-student instruction day, and intentionally on that morning, all of our educators will be in Google Meet meetings similar to this, but with the administrative lead for their department or grade level, just to get feedback from the educators around what's going well, what challenges do you have, how can we brainstorm together to try to problem solve, where are you finding your parents or students need some additional support, so that we can all be in this together and really support each other. As far as the technology piece goes, we have technology support information listed on the website for each of our buildings, so the families know where to, who to call if they need some help with something. And we know that normally our techs are dealing with systems and devices that are actually within the district, and they now are all on board with, okay, if it's a question that really isn't specific to the system, I'm going to do everything I can to try to help figure something out for that family anyway. So, it's all about customer service and trying to really support. So, every member of the staff, from support staff to educators to our techs, everyone stepping up and really doing an amazing job. It's been a good first two days.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. Kelly, can you jump on and give us some, a little bit of background on special ads and para work as well as mental health services?
Yep, I sure can. Good evening, everybody. For the special ed update, I, today, Sarah, Chad, and I, the two special ed coordinators and myself, we had taken the time and we've met with each building in a Google Hangout, so we've done about 13 Google Hangouts over the past two days, just checking in with each team to see how they are doing, what they need, questions that they have. And they also all have positive stories to tell about connections with families, students logging on, making contacts. So, that has been a positive. We're still waiting for and continuing to watch the guidance from MDE to see what we need to do with the IEPs to make them distance learning. So, we're going to utilize the April 13th PD Day to really guide the staff as to what we need to do with the due process paperwork to make sure we're in compliance there, knowing that our first and foremost, what we wanted to do is get out to the students, ease some of the anxieties of our families, and working with some of our very challenging students with a lot of medical needs and a lot of support that our teachers are providing a lot of support for. They're getting some questions, and they've been available by Zoom, Google Chats, emails. We've had, some of our para professionals have been driving materials to homes, meals to homes, just making some of those kid contacts. So, that has been very, going very well as well. A lot of them said yesterday was very overwhelming and today felt so much better. So, I think by day two, they already have been put at ease. Same thing, a lot of assignments have already been completed. They're getting permission to do stories read aloud, so they're really taking it on, and it's going well. As for the paras, we have started the para rotation, so we have about 125 paras in the district that we're rotating through different supports throughout the district, following the medical guidelines and the CDC recommendations of who can work directly with students. And so, we're rotating them through the childcare for emergency personnel, which Corey will go over. But also, the paras have been in instead of working Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, which would have been a typical workday for them, or work week. They came in Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, most of them, to help get ready for distribution of materials. And they're continuing to come in, work remotely, and support teachers, both special ed and general ed, to get paper copies ready. At the high school, we are setting up a resource room that will be staffed by a para for just questions and homework help, so they can get ahold of the teacher. And if they can't, they're used to having some paras in their classrooms, and so we're going to rotate some paras through for some resource room. And we're working our way backwards. We got a rotation started at the high school, so now we're working at the middle school. They've also been working with some clerical support, classroom support. And each week, we'll be setting up a new rotation of staff, just depending on what our student needs are in the childcare and what our staff needs are as we continue to go on the journey of not necessarily always knowing what's coming next. Mental health, our mental health professionals that are through the TAP grants, through Canvas Health, are still working on-site. But they're doing telemedicine, so their office space is our school, and so they are not bringing students in, but they are delivering mental health support to the students that they already served through telemedicine. And we are continuing through our students that are in care and treatment for mental health, chemical health, eating disorders. Those companies or those treatment programs have stayed up and running, and we are continuing to transport our students to those treatment facilities so they can continue to get the help they need for their mental health or chemical health needs. So, that is a quick summary of the special ed world.
Thank you, Kelly. I'm going to ask Director McKinney to jump on and give us an update on childcare and our early learning program, as well as some other community education programming. And by the way, board members will open up the floor, I guess, for any questions you might have for any of the directors or myself when we're done with the update. Corey?
Thank you. Well, if there's, if there's any doubt on how we are on a technological life support, it certainly is right now. As I was jumping onto the board meeting at 6:58, my modem shut down, and all of a sudden, I had that feeling that I'm sure many of our students have from time to time, where their heart just drops right through their feet. But through some triage, we got back up and running here, and we're all set. So, from a community ed standpoint, you know, much like the rest of our system, if there's any doubt as to how amazing the staff is here with Forest Lake Area Schools and, and as well as in community education, I mean, it's, we are just, have one incredible unified system of what we've been able to put together. As I reported two weeks ago, we are up and running with our tier-one childcare at both Forest View and Wyoming, and we've got that service available free for families of emergency workers from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We are opting to provide both before and after care, as well as care on non-school days. That wasn't a requirement or a directive by MDE, but certainly, we feel that if it's an important enough service to, to provide when school is regularly in session, we want to continue that offering for our families who are in that tier-one category. We've seen our numbers increase now that we are in our distance learning model with our 9, especially that 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM time slot. We, we were right around five to 10 students per site when we were over spring break, and that was as expected. But now that families are back and we're in distance learning, just today, we had 12 students at Forest View and 18 students at Wyoming. We are looking at, seeing those numbers rise here to 16 at Forest View tomorrow. Or I'm sorry, that was yesterday. Today, we'll be with 16 and 21 at Wyoming. So, we are seeing them start to go up, and I would expect that as this continues, we'll see that those numbers rise. Major kudos go out to Director Lesman and her staff putting together the schedules for, for that service during the 9:00 to 4:00 PM time slot. And then our school-age care staff are providing the childcare for the before and after school and non-school days. So, a lot of collaboration amongst our systems and to see what we've been able to put together has been, has been really good. I'm going to just bring this into presentation mode here to, to give you just a glimpse as to what we've got with our program. So, I think right now, you can, you can see what my screen sees. And we have our childcare website up and running for families of emergency workers. MDE has actually broadened the field for the tier-one families, as you can see here, with all of the folks that fit underneath these, these bullet points. They were providing very specific jobs, if you will, as to who qualifies. And then, I think in their, you know, rightly so, said, "We're just going to put them all under one bullet point, like healthcare and public health, and not really try to delineate within those services." So, we have a number of families now who qualify under each of these bullet points, and they can go in and get registered, and it takes them right to their registration page. We have enrolled a whole separate registration program for this program so that families can go in, they can see the fees, how the system works, who qualifies, who to contact, and then the various sites they can register for. One of the other things that we're doing too is providing transportation during regular transportation hours on what would have been school days, or is now distance learning days. So, our families go in, they can fill out this transportation page, and then that information comes right back to our office, and we work with the Transportation Department to, to meet the needs of the families in our district. From an early learning perspective, we've got distance learning continuing on in early childhood as well. This has been a very exciting transition for us in, in moving to a whole different, different way of delivering service, much like our K-12 system has seen. From a preschool program, and we are continuing to run distance learning in our preschool programs, in our school readiness programs, that's our four and five-year-olds. And what our staff have put together has just been remarkable. We've had the opportunity to see what, what other districts are doing, and, and you know, many are putting together choice boards and some really good activities. And I will say, our staff, they've, they've, they've answered the call and then some by going above and beyond to deliver some amazing services for our community members. Our goal was to provide some type of early childhood experience that is unique to, to just a parent who might want to go online and find some, some early learning resources, which we all can access just via the internet, but really make it tailor-made towards what our school provides from our teachers, keep that connectedness going on and making sure that they know that our teachers are still there providing very direct service that's, that's unique to what we have to offer. Same thing with our ECFE program. Our ECFE has a distance learning component, and we're offering that free of charge to our families, where families can go in and access resources and stay connected with their ECFE teachers. We have weekly activities that are accessible that our staff will put together by week. And what we've found, and this has been one of the, one of the positive happenings, if you will, like this, is that we have not seen the significant number of drops in our program now that this has occurred. In fact, we've seen some families who are just itching to, to get these resources in their hands now that they've got their little ones at home, knowing how important these types of services are in these early learning years. So, we're very proud of the, the work that our staff have, have put into this and providing these types of activities for our families. And then, lastly, it's just an overall community education update. We've really challenged our staff to be thinking broadly about what distance learning might look like in our community ed programs. And most certainly, we're not running any programs where we're bringing people together, but there are some means to, to offer community ed classes in a distance learning format. So, if you, I don't know if you received or have seen the, the constant contact that went out from community ed, but I'll just pull up the email as it went out here. Our marketing team and Alexa Nelson put together our information and, and our emails have access now to these early learning programs. So, let's see, is everybody still with me? Okay, good. I saw that my internet dropped out. So, we've got, we've got the early, early learning, I'm sorry, the community ed distance learning options here, and you'll see, we've got some, some yoga classes that are being run off-site from a, from a distance learning platform. So, we're really trying to be creative in how we can continue to market to our teams, to our communities, and how we can still be available, and we're looking at some other marketing strategies of just ways to reach out to our community to see what else is out there and what's needed for our community.
Excellent. Thanks, Corey. Director Martini, do you want to jump on and give us a walkthrough of our food service program and other budget-related items?
Yes, thank you, and good evening to everybody.
I'm good to get over here. My, sorry for my internet.
So, as far as our meal program, we're doing curbside now at Forest View Wyoming Senior High, Lionel Lakes Elementary. And it's really interesting because we are also having staff at Lakes International. They contract with us to provide that service. Just today, we provided 259 breakfasts. We also provided 278 lunches. And yesterday, we had even more volume. We had 418 breakfasts, 433 lunches. Kathy Hoff, our food service supervisor, has reached out, and she is offering to all the principals to identify neighborhoods where we might transport meals should they be required out there. John Gray in Transportation stands at the ready. Actually, when Director McKinnon mentioned that he's got folks with daycare, we have 18 daycare kids riding the bus tomorrow, so that's pretty exciting. You had mentioned budget impacts, and Dr. Massey and I talked earlier in the day. We're going to be saving some money in the general fund on a couple of fronts, not only substitute teachers, but also saving money as it relates to fuel in our transportation budget. So, I think that's a real positive. The only revenue impact that we're able to detect at this point is the athletic fees that we're going to be refunding for spring sports. So, we think that, other than anything that the MDE might reverse its course on as far as guidance, those seem to be the primary topics that we'll see going forward. Community ed, of course, will have some issues because fee-based revenue is going to be down quite a bit, and food service with these types of meal counts, their revenue in the last quarter here of the school year will be down as well. So, that's the update I can provide. Thank you, Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate that. I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Peterson, and, and see if there's any questions that the board has of, of our team here.
Thank you, Steve. One, I would just like to say to the team and to all of the staff, what an amazing job. It's been great. As everyone knows, my son is sixth grader, participating. The first day was a little bit hectic. He was a little bit stressed. But today went really smooth. I actually got a text from him at work that said, "I got all my work done earlier in the day," and he was really happy. So, I just want to say thank you again for all that work. I know pivoting a, a large program like this on a, on a short notice and converting to distance learning is no small feat. Anybody else?
Well, I, member chair, I just wanted to mention that I was muted on the 16th, so I didn't get to thank everyone, and I just truly was in awe after that meeting, hearing those amazing director reports and just how staff rose to the occasion, and I have bumped into some staff six feet apart in Target, and she said it just built so much camaraderie, everybody pitching in. She said it's been just a wonderful experience. So, kudos to everybody, the professional level of our staff, and just the brilliance and flexibility, I think, has been incredible. And I think down the road, you're right, Jeff, that delivering this on a different platform is going to serve us well in the future, and I mean, to be able to turn that around and do that so quickly, that was just an amazing feat. So, thank you to everybody. And I also want to thank the superintendent for all of his leadership in this rough time, these uncharted waters, and inspiring our staff, and the messages to parents have been greatly appreciated. And yeah, the kids are all just excited in the cul-de-sac, you know, one hollered that he's going on a scavenger hunt, and others have finished their, finished early, so they got some privileges. So, just kudos. I mean, that was a very tough, tall order, tall task given to the school district. So, and ours is just shining like a star. So, thank you.
I do have one question for Larry quickly. Larry, do you, do you know the breakdown of what areas are using the meals, are taking advantage of the meals? Is it primarily the people that live right nearby the buildings that have been
We have a breakdown for each of the schools, and we have that by breakfast and lunch, but this is not related to whether or not folks will qualify for free and reduced. And so, it's not taking names down. So, we're not able to specifically identify the students and then therefore their residents.
Okay. So, just to be a little more clear with my question, is somebody from, say, for instance, families of ours from Linwood, are they driving over to Wyoming and taking advantage of those meals? Do, would you know that information?
We would ask the staff that are actually handing them out curbside to answer that question. I don't know today. I know that Kathy has reached out, and Principal Joe Mueller is asked to have some meals brought up to the Linwood parking lot, and she's going to be doing that next week.
Okay, excellent. That's great. Thank you.
I, I have basically the same question. Little different for Larry. So, there's definitely double the difference, the big difference yesterday, because everyone in elementary was going to the school anyway. So, it looks like normally about half the people aren't coming around. And how does that higher number, or either number, compare to what our nominal for free and reduced lunch are? And are we throwing away food every day because we're obligated to make it, and then no one picks it up, and it gets thrown away?
So, first off, the folks on the first, while there was a higher volume of people coming to the schools, they're also able to pick up multiple days of meals because the grab-and-grow, the grab-and-go products store well, to answer another one of your questions. What other questions have I not addressed yet?
But Larry, you did say you're identifying areas that might be in need of meals, but they're not able to get the transportation there?
No, we definitely have bus drivers and buses at the ready to do that, and we're waiting for principals to identify specific neighborhoods that would have issue.
Okay.
With this quick update, we're doing meals at Forest View, Lionel Lakes, the high school in Wyoming, out of those four schools. As Larry Martini indicated,
As, uh, Larry Martini indicated, we're anticipating bringing on buses, meals to Linwood. We anticipate perhaps Lionel Lakes being a spot in the apartment area. Maybe the Mobile Home Park in Stacy might be another spot. But we're standing ready to be flexible and deliver meals to areas that demonstrate a need so that people don't have to drive to the school. Bringing meals door to door does require another measure of permissioning with parents that, um, we're trying not to have to go door to door. But again, if we can find critical spots, we can cover most of our district and make sure every kid who needs a meal gets a meal.
I, I have a question for, um, probably Director Georgi. But how is the, like at the high school, the science classes that, um, that use the labs? Or are they kind of coping with some of this, um, uh, some of what's happening, uh, working over online? And then especially in, in terms of like the AP courses, um, any insight into that?
You know, very creatively on the lab piece. Um, that was one of the bigger challenges for our science teachers in particular, to think about what those hands-on labs might look like. But they have done a great job seeking out online resources that are simulations, um, video pieces. So they really have found some, some excellent pieces. The simulations through FET and a couple of those other tools like that actually let students enter data or enter information and then watch how a model grows based on that information. So, so the, the students are experiencing, um, how certain pieces or variables might impact a certain, um, plan that they're working on or, um, an equation they're trying to figure out that would be, have some kind of a scientific outcome. So that has been much of what they've been able to do, the, using those online tools to be able to get at that. Um, and then what was the second piece of your question, Rob?
I, I think that's what I was trying to get at. I was also kind of wondering about, um, uh, uh, for the AP courses, uh, how we, are we going to be able to maintain the rigor necessary to, to pass those, a test at the end?
You know, the, the educators are moving forward with instruction so that the students will be ready if they get to that point. What we haven't been, um, given direction on just yet is how those AP assessments may be administered. Because normally we have them in a proctored setting, um, with students in front of us. And that obviously, at least right now, won't be the case. So we're waiting for some guidance from the college board around how those assessments might occur, if at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Would any other members have questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I have one. This is maybe for, for Cory, but maybe Steve could answer. For the ECFE, um, programming that's coming out, do anyone enroll any siblings in our district that are preschoolers? Or do they have, can they get access to that, or by just going on the ECFE website or community ed? Or do they have to be enrolled in a class?
They have, they have to be enrolled to get the direct correspondences from our staff. Yeah, yeah. On our website, but otherwise if they want the direct correspondences, then they're enrolled in our program, yeah.
Okay, because she was in ECFE last year, but not this year. So she, this neighbor mom had just asked me that. So they need to be enrolled currently?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member Raphael?
Yeah, I have another question about, um, uh, the staff. And, uh, what, what do we have for resources as far as like, uh, um, I, I, it sounds like everything's been going pretty well. In fact, I stopped at, uh, the middle school and boy, everybody was upbeat and feeling alive and, and looking great. Uh, but do we have resources for employees that might be feeling a sense of anxiety or just having trouble kind of working from home? What do we have for the employees to kind of help them? And also like employees that might have been, um, furloughed, or the right word is?
Uh, Donna Friedman, or I, I think you're with us. I'm going to ask maybe you to jump on and, that's a really good question, Rob.
I am here. Uh, yes, we have, we have an EAP program that operates through our insurance. However, it is available to all employees irrespective of whether or not they are actually on the district's insurance. So we've sent that information out via some of the email conversations that we've had. We've also made all of the employee representatives aware of our various bargaining groups. Um, and we just sort of keep an ear to the ground as well, as, as hopefully administrators will do as well as they see people. Um, we have encouraged administrators just to engage in those positive strokes reinforcements wherever they possibly can because people are stressed, certainly. And, um, sometimes there's some crankiness and sometimes there's some, um, absolute rising to whatever it, it, they need to do. And that comes from a whole breadth of human pieces of condition. So we do have that EAP, which I think is a very, very good resource for, for people, um, that does still continue to be available. And we're, 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 we're trying, like I said, to, to make, to, to keep a pulse on people and make sure that they understand, not just in generalities and broad strokes, that hey, people are doing great. We've encouraged our supervisors to say to people, you know what? We really appreciate what, my six-year-old is here, um, that we really appreciate, um, what you are doing for your fellow employees and for your, the students of this district.
If I could interject, it's really important to note that that EAP program, um, that Director Friedman is referencing, that's a second year collaboration with Fairview Services.
And I would add to all of, um, that information that our principals are holding meetings much like this with their staff. Uh, one, to ask, to answer questions and work through logistics, but equally important, to keep that sense of community and those connections and FaceTime with each other. So those are going to be happening. In fact, I helped one principal schedule that today for next week with his staff. Grade level teams, as Director Georgi indicated, will be meeting. We're trying to keep a pace of regular digital contact with each other so we have that human element for our staff. That's a super good question, Rob.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask, member chair, could I ask Donna a quick question or Steve? Did we actually furlough X amount of employees or did we not?
We have not furloughed any employees as of this time. Um, in full disclosure, that may occur, but it is not even a, it's going to, and we just don't know when yet. Um, we have to be very judicious about that because there's more to it than just saving the dollar. Uh, it was a reality that by doing this, though, we may lose valuable employees that we don't want to lose. So, uh, there, funding streams continue for the vast majority of employees. And therefore, the expectation is that there be work available in some capacity for those people. There, there is a, a thing to be aware of with respect to employees who work in, um, a fee-based system. So again, though, um, this is not a, an area where we want to go and, uh, just on the basis that we can.
Thank you.
Jeff, if there aren't any other questions, I have just a couple of quick other highlights, but I want to make sure there aren't other questions.
Hearing nothing. Go ahead, Steve.
All right, um, if you have not visited the COVID-19 webpage on our district homepage, uh, I would direct you to do that. It is, uh, just a wealth of information. Renee Reedy has built that site out. Our digital learning lessons are there. Food service programs and links to those services and childcare as well. Other resources for our students and families are being housed there. It's a great way to stay up to speed with the programming that we're providing for the, providing for the community. We are also in a, in a process of essentially canceling, uh, larger events that are public events in the month of April. That includes, of course, prom, although we do have another date scheduled for prom in later May. Uh, pending, of course, the condition of, of our distancing at that time and the directors were getting from the state. Uh, gra, all of our larger events in May are still on. We have not canceled any of them. That would include graduation, academic awards, uh, those other events that happen in May, concerts and so on. We'll address those as we get closer, but events in April at this point have been canceled. And that would also include festivals of culture. We, um, aside from all of our work around distance learning and preparation for that and delivering on those services, we aren't losing sight of our need to market and continue to attract enrollment for the district. So our principals are multitasking and continuing to be diligent around their kindergarten, kindergarten list and working on next year's enrollment. And with that, that concludes my report.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Dr. Massey? Hearing nothing, let's move on to the consent agenda. But before we entertain a motion, I would just like to thank Jeff Davis for all of his service to the district. A great employee and wish him the best in his retirement. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to, uh, this is member Kettle. I'd like to hold out, uh, six, five, or I can cover it right now, but that's a donation piece just for a second.
Let's, uh, get a motion on the table and then you can, uh, do it under discussion.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Uh, member Kettle, would you like to speak on donations?
On donations, I just want to add, as we do every month, um, we had a total of nine donations this month for a total of $8,712.05. So with that, I'd like to offer a big thank you to all of those organizations and individuals for their donations to the Forest Lake area schools. And with that, I'll make a, a motion that we accept the donations on behalf of the school district.
Thank you, member Kettle. Any other discussion? Hearing nothing, member clerk, will you please take a roll call?
Attempt to not hang up instead of unmute. Okay, member Kettle?
Aye.
Member Kettle votes aye. Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Raphael?
Aye.
Member Raphael votes aye. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to action items. Uh, 7.1 bus leasing. Director Martini?
Thank you very much. So we've been leasing buses for quite some time here in the school district. This year, the transportation department's requesting permission to lease 27, um, 77 passenger buses. They're 2021, uh, vintage, three of them with trailer hitching. They're also requesting, uh, to lease six 2021, uh, lift school buses using the Minnesota State bid contract with Hoagland Bus Company. We originally had a bid from Hoagland for trade-ins for $1,200. But in casual conversation, it got brought to the attention of Quality Bus and Truck, uh, that we were going to be, um, selling 14 of our school buses, and they put a bid in for $2,000 each. So the action we'd like you to take tonight is approving leasing of the buses and the sale of the old school buses, uh, to Quality Bus and Truck Parts.
Thank you, Director Martini. Do we have a motion to purchase the 21 buses and sell the other buses to, uh, Quality Truck and Bus Parts?
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Perfect. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Um, as busing came up in casual conversation, is, we're not going around any bid process or anything else that we should be doing on these buses that are available for sale?
So we normally trade them in to Hoagland. These buses are from 2007 and from 2009. Um, we had perceived from looking at data that 1,200 was a fair value. But Quality wanted, uh, the buses for parts.
Okay.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Number two. Um, Larry, have we sold them before back? Or is this the first time?
I think this is the first time we've not done a direct trade-in and offered them for sale. I do recall back in 2003 that we had some criticism. And so we offered the buses, uh, for sale to those individuals in the community, and they didn't take us up on it.
Yeah, I think that's, that's an excellent way to, to hand those off when we're finished with them and they've passed their time. And Larry, is there any talk ever on the horizon of seat belts in buses?
There's constant talk about that. It's likely that there would be a pronouncement at some point in time from the National Transportation Safety Board.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have an additional bus safety question. Um, is there ever discussion on putting, um, passenger monitoring systems? Either actual optical ones, like the cameras in the buses, or the passive ones that if there's a butt in the seat, you can tell from the front? Um, so you can tell if kids are standing or if there's a sleeping kindergartner somewhere that doesn't accidentally get brought to a bus garage?
So we haven't explored any of the latter, uh, seat sensitive items. But John Gray did just obtain some quotes, um, for cameras. Um, you know, our fleet's in excess of 120 vehicles. So the number exceeded, uh, $200,000. That's not shocking with the number of buses. But we have that, uh, quote in hand.
Would we ever piecemeal it and put eyes on the most necessary buses?
It's certainly something we could explore.
That's my only question. Well, my final question.
Thank you, member Luthner. Any other questions? Hearing none. Uh, member Luthner, will you please take a roll call vote?
Okay, member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Raphael?
Aye.
Member Raphael votes aye. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye. Member Kettle?
Aye.
Member Kettle votes aye.
Motion passes. All right, 7-2, resolution relating to the $9,610,000 general obligation, facilities maintenance and capital facilities bonds. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, ma, member Peterson. As you know, this, um, we've been doing a lot of work on these projects related to our buildings as well as, um, other projects in the district. And I am going to turn my mic over to Director Martini to give us an update here.
Thank you very much. I'm going to actually, uh, suggest to you that we turn over to Jody Zesba, the senior municipal advisor from Aylers and Associates. The team from Aylers, um, Matt Hammer, uh, Shelby McCoy, and Jody, who's with us tonight, have done just an amazing job, and we are so pleased with these results. So if I could turn it over to Jody, I'll have her take it away.
Thank you, Larry, and we are thrilled with the results. And we'll kind of go through and highlight some of the information included here. But we were given the opportunity to take a look at financing some of these projects without increasing taxes. So we are, um, financing these projects, keeping the tax rate going forward under the rate that the, um, taxpayers in your district are paying now and using some existing revenue sources either. And I'll kind of highlight those as we go through the report. But, um, we did, um, downsize the amount of the bond issue for But we did downsize the amount of the bond issue for one reason, and that is to keep these bonds as bank-qualified. So when we have bank-qualified bonds, and there's a limit that takes into consideration a few factors, including the power amount of the bonds, if that stays under $10 million in a calendar year, then they can be considered bank-qualified, we attract more bidders, and we generally get a lower interest rate. So last week, as the market was getting a little bit more volatile again, and you've probably seen that in the stock market, we're seeing the same thing in the municipal bond market, we asked Dr. Massey and Larry if they would be willing to consider downsizing this issue to make it bank-qualified, and they both agreed that that was a strategy that we should use, and in the end, it worked out very well for us. So that's why you're seeing a little bit lower dollar amount. We are funding three different purposes with this bond issue, some health and safety and indoor air quality projects, some deferred maintenance projects, as well as some other capital expenditures that will be used for your outdoor facilities. You'll see the rating that was assigned by Moody's. Your ratings were affirmed, so the Minnesota State Credit Enhanced Rating was assigned, and all districts under that program get a nice high AA2 rating. Your underlying rating was affirmed at an A2, and they removed your negative outlook, so we were really happy to see that. Both Dr. Massey and Larry participated in the call with the rating agency. It's kind of a little bit of an interrogation process, a long telephone conference with lots of questions, and they both represented your district very well. So that was an important part of the process, and again, nice to see that improvement in the rating that they assigned to you by removing that negative outlook. You did receive five bids. We like to see at least three, and that's, we thought we'd probably get two or three if we didn't have this as bank-qualified, so we were able to track some more bidders. Northland Securities is the low bidder, and you'll see that nice little rate of about 2.16%. So we were thrilled to see that. I think Larry's going to be happy not to hear from me tomorrow. I've been calling him just about every day with updates on the municipal bond market, and last night I said, oh, I think we might be in the high twos. It's looking like, you know, the market has gone up again, and in the end, our high bid was at the 2.78%. So again, we're just thrilled to see that 2.16%. In the notes then, on page one underneath that chart, you'll see that we had estimated a rate of 2.24% when we updated the schedules and the pre-sale report that we provided last week when we decided to switch this to be a bank-qualified issue. So even with our results now, and rates going up a little bit, we were able to come in under that 2.24 estimate, and the result is about $53,000 less in principal and interest payments over the life of the bond issue. We will close on these bonds April 30th, so that's when the district will have the money. And the action that we're requesting from the school board tonight then is to award the sale through the resolution that was provided to you by your bond attorney, Andrea Hadkey from Dorsey &amp; Whitney. We have a number of attachments that are included with the report, and I'll just briefly mention a couple of things on those. So the bid tab is the first attachment, and again, you'll see Northland Securities, the true interest rate is the rate that we award the sale based upon, and that is again, 2.16%. Northland is a local firm out of Minneapolis, so nice to see that. Piper Sandler is what used to be called Piper Jaffrey, so they were the next lowest bid and at about 2.26%. And then you had a bid from Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and then a couple bids out of Memphis. So again, we were really, really happy to receive that many bids and the nice favorable results. The sources and uses schedule, the next couple financial schedules then, or all the remaining financial schedules, are updates to the information that we included in the pre-sale report that we presented to you at a previous board meeting. One change that I'll note on the sources and uses is that the cost of issuance is a little bit lower because the, once we went under $10 million, the rating agency fee went down by about $15,000. So nice to see that go down by a little bit because you got under that $10 million cutoff point for them, too. On page three, that is the debt service schedule for all three components combined, and then the true interest cost rate is part of the yield statistics at the bottom of the page, if you want to see where we get that number from. And then, again, just some updates to the schedules that we provided to you previously. So attachments, page four, is our long-term financing plan, and that's where we're really tracking your tax rate and making sure that we stay within or lower than the rate that the taxpayers are already paying. You can see for this component of the bond issue, this is the health and safety or indoor air quality component, you're paying off that debt pretty quickly, so the rate on this portion of the bond issue is 1.91%, and that's in the upper left-hand corner. And then if you'll look at attachments, page five, that's the bar chart that we showed you previously, where we're showing that your tax rate will go down. There's still a little bit, that dotted line there shows the difference you have between your tax rate now and where we expect it to be over the next couple of years. And then attachments, page six, is the deferred maintenance portion of this bond issue. This is a 15-year term on this particular bond, this particular component, so that was a 2.31% rate, just like a home mortgage. If it's a little bit longer term, you're going to pay a little bit higher interest rate, but still a nice little rate on that part of the bond issue. These payments will be made from your existing long-term facilities maintenance revenue, so there's no additional tax increase associated with this because you're using existing resources. Finally, then, the third component is the capital facilities bond piece. This is a 10-year level debt payment structure, so an even lower rate than the first 10-year schedule that we looked at, so this is at a 1.88%, and you'll use operating capital revenue to make these payments. So again, no increase in property taxes as a result of that. Moody's issues two different reports, so they issued a press release on behalf of the district that starts on attachments, page eight, and I'll just highlight a couple things there, again, affirming your A2 underlying rating and the AA2 enhanced, and then under ratings rationale, you'll see there they're highlighting the removal of your negative outlook, due to your stabilizing financial profile following the passage of an increase to the district's voter-approved operating referendum. There are some, there is some language, not a surprise, related to the coronavirus outbreak, and then they're summarizing different factors that could lead to an upgrade or downgrade. And the detailed credit opinion starts on attachments, page 13, and provides a lot of similar information at the beginning, and then quite a bit of detailed information, a lot of it, again, based upon the information that Dr. Massey and Larry provided as part of that call with Moody's. And finally, Larry really likes the scorecard on attachments, page 18, so I'll just highlight that, but nice to see, in the end, there the scorecard indicated outcome at an A1, which is a level above the assigned rating, so kind of an indication that there's room for your rating to go upward if things continue to improve, especially with your financial condition. So that is everything that I wanted to highlight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have, but we are certainly appreciative of the opportunity to be of service to the district and are very, very happy with the way things turned out today. I'll sleep a lot better tonight.
All right, thank you, Jody. Does anybody have any questions? Director Martini?
We would ask that you approve the resolution, and that's a roll call vote. Subsequent to that activity this evening, we've got quite a number of documents for yourself, the board chair, to sign, as well as clerk. Thank you.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to pass the resolution as attached to the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye. Member Tyson.
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye. Member Kettle.
Aye.
Member Kettle votes aye. Member Olson.
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Member Luthner. Moving on to 7-3, medical insurance premium change.
Thank you, Board Chair. This, for the first time in seven years, we're asking the school board to consider medical insurance premium change. If you click on the Board Book Attachment Insurance History, you'll see the history of our premiums, and we are requesting the board actually decrease the single premium by $6.92 per month, and increase the family premium from $1,869.11 up to $1,950. Since we pay folks 26 times a year, almost, two paychecks a month, that's going to represent a $40 per paycheck increase for folks that have family medical. When those two movements are combined, it's about a 2.1%, 2.2% increase in premiums, and they have stayed, again, as I've stated, the same for the last seven years, but with our claims history and the current year, we're requesting this change because we need to cover more revenue. I can stand for any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? I would just like to say, I think you've done a great job managing those premiums, and 2.2 is almost unheard of in the industry. I've seen significantly higher premium adjustments, so. With that, I guess we will entertain a motion to pass 7-3.
Jeff, let me just emphasize a point that Larry started with. This is the first increase in seven years. So 2% in a single year is noteworthy as a huge accomplishment, but to see the first grade increase in seven years, again, speaks to Larry and his team's management of our medical premiums and our healthcare program, all the incentives to keep people healthy and to keep premiums low, so hats off to Larry and his team and the work here.
Member Chair, I just wanted to echo what Steve said, that that's impressive to not have an increase for seven years. I don't know if that exists in many other areas or districts, so congratulations, Larry, and we do excellent, excellent by way of our employees with that plan.
Anyone else? With that, I would entertain a motion for 7-3.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One question. This has been made well noted to everybody in the teaching world, so this isn't the first they're hearing of it.
We have three different teachers that sit on the Employee Benefits Committee. We brought it to the Employee Benefits Committee Attention back in January. Unfortunately, with the timing, we were going to share it with the Finance Committee this past March meeting, and that was canceled. It was in the slide deck, though, that we shared with all school board members. We also did bring this up with the Finance Committee back in January, but because I was out for most of February, it might not have been uppermost in folks' minds. Whether or not all 500 faculty are aware, because we rely on the three teachers as conduits for information, I couldn't tell you, but we will be putting out a notice for our open enrollment period that is effective during the month of May.
Larry, this is Julie. You did talk about it at the finance meeting, and so we knew it was coming. So thank you for all the information, yeah.
I'm hopeful that all staff is aware that it's coming, because we did take a long lead time in bringing this to folks, but with crazy situations of late, it might not be uppermost in their minds.
Understood. So if my memory serves correctly, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing nothing, Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call on 7-3?
Uh, Member Tyson.
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye. Member Kettle.
Aye.
Member Kettle votes aye. Member Olson.
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to 7-4, negotiations policy 429. Dr. Massey?
Thank you. It shall be the intent of the school board to conduct negotiations consistent with all affecting Minnesota statutes. This school board policy is adopted to provide guidelines that will promote orderly and constructive relationships between all bargaining identities of the school district, and we're recommending through policy, the policy committee, really just some language changes. What we're looking to add, a sentence to the policy that would state, "The superintendent of schools is responsible for initiating and completing bargaining within the parameters, within parameters provided by the school board. Negotiations, methods and procedures will be determined by the superintendent." And by doing that, we're able to eliminate some other redundant language in the policy and create a tighter policy, and with that, administration recommends approval.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the negotiations policy?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, Member Clerk, will you please take a roll call?
Okay, Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye. Member Kettle.
Aye.
Member Kettle votes aye. Member Olson.
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye. Member Tyson.
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to 7-5, meal charging policy 506. Dr. Massey?
The Forest Lake Nutrition Services strives to ensure that all meals are healthy, well-balanced, and provide students the nutrition they need to succeed at school. Unpaid meal charges place a financial burden on the Nutritional Services Department. This policy is to ensure compliance with federal reporting requirements of the USDA Child Nutrition Program and to provide oversight and accountability for the collection of outstanding meal balances. And the School Board Policy Committee has spent some time working on this policy and are recommending, I think, a couple of really important updates to the policy, specifically an addition that would state reminders for payment of outstanding meal balances will not demean or stigmatize any student participating in the school lunch program. That's not to suggest that shaming practices were in place, but as personal change and other changes within staffing, this creates the impact for the school board and the district and our guiding principles and philosophies of how we want kids treated as relates to these services, and makes an explicit statement as such in the policy, and I think that's a really good movement on the policy. And then one additional add as well, and that would be a meal will not be taken from a student with an overdrawn balance account. And I would assure you that that's not the practice today, and we want to make sure it's not the practice tomorrow either, and with that, administration recommends approval.
All right, do we have a motion for 7-5?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
Member Chair, I'd just like to say that I think that stronger language is really appropriate and is necessary in that policy, just for the reasons Steve mentioned, that, you know, staff will change, and, you know, it's not the child's fault, they don't have money, and just to kind of nip and tuck that we're not going to go there for the sake of the child, so, thank you, good job to the policy committee.
Thank you, Member Tyson. Anyone else? Well, I would just like to concur. I think it's important to put that into the policy, especially when we're talking about food, and not that any of those practices were ever in place in our district, but that for future, they are referenced, right, in the policy. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Uh, Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye. Member Kettle.
Aye.
Member Kettle votes aye. Member Olson.
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye. Member Tyson. Member Rayfield votes aye. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. And member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on, we have nothing under discussion items. Review your upcoming calendar dates, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for our first virtual board meeting.
Great job, everybody.